We're gonna bring this meeting to order at this time. So, uh, let Commissioner Williams get the invocation and the pledge.
Let us pray. Heavenly Father, once again, the Lord, we we ask for your grace and your mercy. Father, it seem like every time that that we think we out of harm's way with the virus, something else pops up in our sense of speaking, but somewhere I heard or somewhere I read that you won't put no more on us than we can bear. Or that you got the whole world in your hands. But we have to be concerned for the welfare of our neighbors. Father, we realize that that this is the time of year that that we all celebrate in a few more days, the birth of your son, Jesus Christ. The greatest miracle known to man took place on his birthday. He's the same yesterday. He'll be the same today and the same tomorrow. We'd ever remember, Father, that he say he'll be a bridge over deep water, shell in a time of storm, warhorse in a time of war, bow lights in a time of bow. And one day, Father, uh, he'll be my dying blood maker. So we ask you to be with us this afternoon as we do the business of Columbia County. As always, we ask for you to bless our troops that they serve around the world to give us this opportunity that we have here tonight to have an open meeting for the people, embodied people. These and all our blessings, we act in our son, Jesus' name, that died and went to cavalry. Third day, he arose from the dead and sent into heaven, seated at the right hand of Father God Almighty, where it comes to come to jik in today. In his name, amen, amen, and amen.
Okay, um, I guess now's the time when we, uh, see if we have any additions or deletions?
We do not.
I have, I have one addition.
You got one addition?
Yeah, I'm, um, I wanna add, um, the local technology planning team for access sixty-seven that we're gonna have to appoint at the, uh, at our next meeting. I just wanted to discuss it.
Just discuss that at the end?
Yeah.
The chairman, I would like to add one, a street closing for my three hour block party on Saturday. And I don't have the name of the street, but I'll call it in the morning and make sure that nine-one-one is, uh, is, uh, notified of the, of the street closing for that, uh, two, three hour period.
Okay, is that a city street or county? Is that a city street?
No, county street.
Okay, okay. All right, so you'll get the name and all?
Yes, sir.
When you vote on it at the end, okay?
Yes.
All right, uh, with all of that said, can we get an approval of the agenda?
Some move.
Second.
Got a motion and a second? All in favor? Okay, this time we're gonna do a presentation of the ministerial matters. Oh, changing of the chairman. I just wanna say I've enjoyed this last year being the chair. I hope everybody was pleased with the job I done. I think we accomplished a lot during this year and, uh, look forward to the, to next year. Coming up, I think we have a lot of things fixing to happen and like I said, I just wanna say I appreciate the board giving me the opportunity to do this. So, uh, I guess at this time.
You'll seek nominations?
Yeah, okay. Do I get, can I get a nomination for the, uh, chairman?
I nominate Robbie Hollingworth for service next year's chair and myself as vice chair.
I'll second. Got a motion and a second? Any comment? All in favor?
Aye.
Any opposed?
Mr. Chairman, I, I move, uh, to, uh, recommend, uh, Tim Murphy for vice chair.
He, he made that part of his motion, sir? He put it in the first motion?
He put it in the first motion.
Did he?
Yes.
Okay. Okay. All right, um, I guess at this time, do we, we will swap chairs?
You gotta do that in resolution? Yeah, we need to do the scheduling resolution real quick and then we'll do the swap.
Okay. Oh. You got it? You gonna read it?
So, we have, uh, uh, two proposed resolutions, twenty-twenty-one R dash fifty-one for the scheduling of the meeting. Um, am I reading this one or do we wanna do the one that's on the agenda? Okay. I will read it, Mr. Chair.
Okay.
Pretty short. Resolution number twenty-twenty-one R dash fifty-one, a resolution of the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, providing for the location, time and place for holding all regular meetings of the Board of County Commissioners and providing notice thereof. Whereas the Columbia County, Florida Charter effective January first, two thousand and three, as amended effective January first, two thousand and seven, January first, two thousand and thirteen, and January first, twenty-twenty-one, provides the Board of County Commissioners shall provide by resolution for the location, time and place for holding all regular meetings of the Board. Now therefore be resolved by the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida as follows. One, the regular meetings of the Board shall be held on the first and third Thursday of each month commencing at five-thirty P M. effective January second, twenty-twenty-two, at the Columbia County School Board Administrative Complex, three-seventy-two West Duval Street, Lake City, Florida, unless changed as provided in the charter. Two, as provided in the charter, special meetings may be held on call of the chair or two or more commissioners. Upon call for a special meeting, the county manager shall give at least thirty-six hours notice to the public of the time, place, and purpose of the meeting in accordance with the procedures established in the administrative code. Action by the Board of County Commissioners at a special meeting shall be limited to the purpose for which the special meeting was called. Unanimously passed and adopted at this regular meeting of the Board of County Commissioners of Columbia County, Florida, on the second day of December, twenty-twenty-one.
Can I get a motion for the resolution?
So, may. A, a question on the resolution, when did, when did this board, uh, uh, vote to move the first Thursday meeting to nine o'clock?
We're voting on it right now.
The one as read is, is, has both meetings at five-thirty.
Oh, okay.
Yeah, the one as read is the one that's on the agenda, which has both meetings at five-thirty.
So that resolution doesn't move the meeting to nine thirty?
Adoption of the resolution as read without amendment would leave both meetings at five-thirty.
We were requested to prepare a second resolution that would move the first meeting to a morning meeting. Um, it's available if the board wants it, but the one that was read would be the one
that we're going. That all meetings stay at five-thirty?
That's the one that's on the floor, yes.
Does anybody wanna make a motion to read the one and listen to it for the we should move, move the meeting to the morning meeting?
I think it's gonna be exactly the same, only it's a nine-thirty time. I mean, I guess I'll open, I'll start with commenting. I, I really don't have a preference either way. I'll just, I'll just say that I think the one meeting at nine-thirty, um, if you look at some of our largest employers in the county, Department of Corrections, the healthcare sector, uh, a lot of those guys don't work daytime. There's a lot of night shift people working. And I think having one meeting during the day does two things. It allows people who, uh, work at night an opportunity to participate in these meetings too. It also, um, uh, uh, allows, uh, for staff, uh, to participate while they're on duty and, uh, and not have to stay late. So I, I know there are, there are probably, I mean, most counties across the state, um, that do have two meetings a month have a morning meeting and an afternoon meeting. It's not uncommon. So, I mean, I'm, I'm good either way, but, you know, I, I think nine-thirty, having one in the morning is a good idea.
I, uh, well, I, I, I'm not for a morning meeting. Uh, we've tried morning meetings, uh, in the past. Uh, there are no public hearings can take place in a morning meeting. Uh, all those meetings would have to be on the, on, on the evening meetings of every month. And there comes a time where it just seem like it just stretches everyone to have something that need to be, uh, a public hearing on and you have to wait, uh, from, for that, uh, that extra, uh, sit that extra meeting out to do so. The, uh, what we found in the past that the participation in morning meeting have not been adequate to, uh, keep them at a morning meeting, but, you know, this is up to the board, but there haven't never been a successful morning meeting since I've been a commissioner. And that's why they would move, that's why they would move to, uh, to, uh, at night.
I'll.
Counselor?
I'll restate my motion just for clarification. Uh, I, I'll make the motion to accept the resolution as read with all meetings being left at five-thirty. Uh, me and Mr. Williams had this conversation many times about the unattended and so I, I'll stand by that motion.
And, and, and one of the reasons it was moved in the, in the, in the, in the past was people complained about, I got to work and I need to, I can't come to a meeting. I got to work. And it used to be at seven o'clock, uh, and then we moved from seven o'clock to five-thirty. And while it was at five-thirty, maybe someone wanna come by the board meeting instead of going home and then coming back at seven o'clock. Five-thirty have been the most productive for participation, uh, uh, for our board meetings.
Counselor, what is the ruling on that? Why do you can't have, uh, public hearing in the morning meeting?
Uh, particularly anything relating to land use, planning, and zoning has to happen after five P M. Understood? So you're always, the commissioner's right, you're always gonna have to have meetings on a regular basis after that five P M. hour. Um, I think Commissioner Witt's point, uh, is, is, is well taken in that larger, uh, counties across the state do kind of follow this pattern where they have a business meeting day where it's more internal issues that the county's trying to handle through the board. And then the second meeting would be more for matters of public concern and mandatory public hearings.
Well, I've been on record a couple of times, I know, talking about this, that I've always liked the idea of having one morning and one afternoon meeting also because people that just can't make it to an afternoon meeting if they wanna come to a morning meeting. But there again, I'm flexible. I can make either one, but, you know.
Can I, Mr. Chairman, can I make a suggestion?
Yes.
So, so we don't get bogged down. Why don't we consider, um, I don't know if there's a motion and a second on the table where?
There is.
There is, okay. Never mind, we can't do it. Why don't we, why don't we consider the, the, the split meeting first, uh, so we don't vote the other one down? Because it sounds like, you know, if that one, it sounds like everybody's got consensus that one, the, the second one will work. So why don't we, uh, consider the first one? You can ask Mr. Murphy to withdraw his motion. He's got it on the floor.
It would, it will withdraw for lack of a second one?
If it's not seconded.
But I'll withdraw.
You withdraw.
Okay, I, I'll make a motion, uh, that we, uh, do a nine-thirty for the first meeting and a five-thirty for the second.
Got a motion? Do I get a second?
Now, what, what was your motion?
To do the nine-thirty, do the morning meeting and the afternoon meeting.
Okay. A second?
Ah, second.
Okay, I got a motion and a second. Any more discussion? All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Aye.
So we got a three-two vote for a morning and afternoon meeting. And, and I would also add, let's try this for a while, for a few months and just see how it works. If it don't work, we can always change it.
If it bogs us down or, because I just went through the crowd and asked people and, and some people won't, you know, some people get home from work at five-thirty and they got kids and fam, you know, it's hard.
Yeah.
So, if it turns out bad, we can always change it.
Yeah, like I said, if it don't work, we can always go back. Um, okay, so, uh, Mr. Chairman? Yes, sir. I'm looking at the new Mr. Chairman. New Mr. Chairman? You have?
Let's have a new gamble. Where's the new one? Can you see, so you gamble in the box? Boy, this chair's still cold. I've been sitting, sitting here twenty-five years, I've never seen that. What? Not presenting a crack gamble.
Yes, sir.
He don't, I don't need all that.
You have the gamble, just since you have to bring it.
I wanna say I appreciate y'all having confidence in me and I hope I don't break your confidence. Uh, y'all hit me on the leg if I do something wrong, but I appreciate it very much. It's an honor. Uh, I'm glad I'm getting it done and, and hopefully I'll do okay. I think the first item is Jamie Bell, Jones-Edmonds.
Mr. Chair, she is, uh, caught in traffic on the interstate and will be here when she can get here.
Okay, we can pass that, I guess. We'll go to.
Mr. Chairman, I, I make a motion. We approve the consent agenda?
Second. Got a motion and a second? All in favor, aye?
Aye.
Mr. Chairman, I make a motion. We adopt the consent agenda?
Second. Got a motion and a second? All in favor?
Aye.
All right, we got Mr. Kirby up next. When is this, uh, property purchase?
As soon as we get to that item, I'll, I'll get you, okay?
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. I have four items for your consideration this evening. First thing we'll start with is our quarterly capital project update. We'll start with our grant-funded projects. So at Eastside Sewer Expansion, the construction bid is planned to go out either January or February of twenty-twenty-two. So that project's becoming reality. Ellisville Sewer Expansion. For those of us that remember, for those of you that were not here, at the last board meeting, you approved the contract for the twenty-five thousand gallon expansion and give permission to move forward with another twenty-five thousand gallon expansion. Mr. Noel and I are working on that together. We'll be bringing that additional change order back to you in the immediate future. Legis Appropriation Rail is set on U S ninety east. That project is substantially complete. The only reason it is not closed out is because of the proposed six-hundred-and-fifty-thousand-dollar change order. This is the change order for the rail basically changed up at the end of the job. We had a long meeting with them. We advised that our partnership is not one-sided. They promised to get back with us. We have heard nothing at this time. I'm pleased to announce that our WUP permit out at the Intermodal Park is being promised to be received in the month of December. Lot of hard work by a lot of folks. That WUP permit is the first big step in our big direction for water. Playhole Creek. Contractor has began with his, uh, go for relocation, ordering materials. Two-forty-seven Cannon Creek under survey. Wilson Springs Sidewalk. Funds will be available in twenty-twenty-two. C H S sidewalk, project's underway. Should be finished up by the first of this year. About a month. Two-forty-two West. That's been a successful project. We're buttoning it up with punch list items, well on budget, good looking job. Two-forty-two East is under contract. It shall be complete by Christmas of this year. Cypress Slakes and Charles, where the same place we were the last time I talked to y'all, okay? Their attorneys?
Yes, sir.
Can we, can the attorney give us an update on what's going on with that?
Sure.
Um, Commissioner, I'd sent you Mr. Natervoff's last correspondence with me. He's still supposed to get back to me. So I wish I had better news to report. I send him emails asking him for an update. The last thing I sent you is the last update I've gotten from him. And to be clear, they haven't said no, so.
So at this point, do you, I mean, should we move on to just eminent domain or would you, I mean, can we? How long are we gonna carry this on with this?
It, it's, it's gonna be up to the board. I mean, so we're negotiating and again, he's not said no. He said he just needed to clear it with his clients. I mean, you've seen emails. That's been six weeks. Yeah, it'd be up to the board if you wanted to go to eminent domain.
Yeah.
Okay. Parnell Hills and High Dry Acres are on the agenda for later tonight to approve the engineering services. Assuming they're approved, we'll move on with engineering. And Queens, Ambria, and Winfield are under design by North Florida Professional Services. So we have about thirty-seven million dollars on the books for grant-funded projects. We've went through about five million with about thirty-two million left over, okay? That concludes your grant-funded side of things.
Uh, uh, Kevin, uh, it, does it? Does that section of that road have full name? We left out one. I don't want no misunderstanding when we get ready to, uh, Lenona. It goes from.
Yes, sir. That was oversight on my part. Yes, sir. It's, it's inclusive.
Okay.
Yes, sir.
Kevin, uh, go ahead, Ron.
I'll go.
Uh, sidewalks, C H S, two-fifty-two sidewalk, I thought. Is Cory or, or we have somebody on there inspecting that project?
No, sir. That's under what they call the LAP funding.
Right.
It's completely, uh, covered by the state.
Okay. One thing I just wanna emphasize to you, just to, uh, the way they went in there and cut that thing so close to Arkey's fence, uh, that's gonna be a maintenance nightmare if something's not done there. That dirt ain't gonna do nothing, but that, that thing be covered up aside. When you get a chance, run out there and take a look at it. I know it ain't on the top of our chart, but, uh, it, it's, it's, it's gonna be a nightmare because we're gonna end up maintaining it.
Well, we are gonna be doing the maintenance on that, so if there's an issue, we ought to do.
And for ver, for verification purposes, we do and go in and do a verification look before they sell the job. We do get involved at the end. But Commissioner.
Pay attention to that if you would.
To, to your point, staff and I've talked a lot about sidewalk. Unless the sidewalk's really needed, that's the gift that keeps giving. And, you know, from a back wing mowing, from what you're talking about, it just, the one we put out west of town has been a maintenance nightmare off of Burley Road out there and, um, it, it, it is difficult at times. Okay. All right, on the county-funded side of things. Fort White Ball Field, the school board and bleachers received, waiting to be installed. Annie Maddox Playground Equipment, waiting on a delivery date post-COVID. Richardson Generator, you're gonna hear me say this on several items. Whatever's going on with the pricing or kind of reprioritizing basically real needed projects versus desired projects to see if this financial business will lower again. Prices have just went through the roof, as everybody knows. So we put that on hold for right now. Courthouse Chiller Towers Elevator. Contractor set to begin work, completion date later this month. Public Works Roof Repair is out to bid. V O I P switches, waiting arrival of equipment, estimated four to six weeks out. Nine-one-one A C monitor program. Waiting to hear from our vendor on the installation date. Franklin Street Tower, we put in a hole, generator monitoring on hold. Ruder upgrade, we're waiting on updated pricing and statement of work. They've asked for a change of price now. I T fire suppression, waiting final quote. Field laser grading, stripping of the fields has started this week, construction for next week. Richardson Outdoor Lights are on hold. Five Points Restroom, we're validating, they're still holding on their quote. We've already done the permitting, assuming they're holding on their quote, we'll get started immediately. Rum Island Park Gate in the design phase. Alligator Lake, uh, Alligator Lake Shade Structure, approval for budget amendment tonight. Cell Five Sand. We married those two contracts at the last board meeting. We have twenty-six thousand cubic yards left. We're in good shape on that job. Lake City Animal Shelter. Waiting on completion of building to begin the parking lot construction. South Side Parking Lot, Mr. Murphy, this is in your district. We bumped into a big stump in road. Twenty years ago, plus or minus, when the city versus the county took ownership. We got ready to permit that parking lot. What we found out was all of the as-built, not on the ponds up front, but towards the back and the sides, they're simply not what they should be. So we almost can need to add another capital project list up there. We're going to enlarge it upon the two. Okay, that makes sense? It was something we just stumbled upon. We worked real laboriously, we're back with Water Management District. We think we've got some solutions, but let's throw the kink in the water on that one.
Kevin, in our procedures we carry on as of today, how do we run into this? How, how do we prevent this from in the future?
It, the, the check measures we've got today, it, it can't happen. For lack of a better word. We, we go out, we as-built, we validate. Um, if you recall, the ponds right there on Baskin Norris itself, the roadside things, there was a difference in them. Same exact situation.
Mr. Chair? Mr. Chair? Yes.
Wait, Mr. Williams.
Uh, uh, Kevin, what was the purpose on those that you say is on hold?
So, post-COVID, when we set these budgets, we had a number, right? Now, everything has went through the roof. For example, PVC pipe has had a four-hundred percent increase in ninety days. So numbers that we got, when we were doing budget time on certain things, just aren't real anymore. So back six months ago, whenever we were doing it, you know, that was worth ten dollars. Now they're saying it's worth twenty dollars. So basically, we got a pot of money. We're going through what is holding true. We know we can afford it and then at some point we'll have to relook at, here's where our finance, you know, expenditures, revenues. What have you got left over? What can you afford to do?
So you're saying that the one you put on hold, the chances are they won't be funded?
What I'm concerned about as, right now, everything that we're working on is holding true when we prepared them at budget time, right? There's no variance. So if we go ahead and jump on some of the ones I said on hold, at some point you're gonna mix your money up. Basically, back in the summer when we got the numbers to do the budget, they do not coincide with what the numbers are today.
So how, what's the fix for?
Sir?
What is the fix?
I'm hoping things go back to normal by the time we get down our list. I mean, I don't have a crystal ball.
Mr. Chairman. So, Mr. Kirby, what you're, what you're trying to tell us is you're prioritizing the projects first, that you know the, the finances will hold. We're not saying we're not gonna fund these we got on hold. We're saying we're gonna wait to start them until, and see if this market changes and these, and these things go down.
My hope is the economy will.
This is not a, this is not a, we're not funding.
No, sir.
Okay.
No, sir. I'm hoping next time we come back here in a quarter, prices have calmed down, we're back in business.
In a nutshell, what, uh, what we're planning to do is keep monitoring it. Those projects that go over, obviously we'll take care of and, uh, at the end of the day, those projects that we may have to prioritize, we'll try and find out additional funding for or we may have to cut projects. That's not our goal. Our goal is to hope prices come down.
Yeah, but that'll, that'll come back before the board. We can take that on at a later date.
We have to come back before the board.
But, it, it, you know, you can't, you can't take on all these at one time anyway, so it makes sense to, to go ahead and start the ones you know are gonna hold true financially.
Okay. All right, Field Renovations out at South, South Side to begin work next week. R C Track, waiting on updated costs. Petroleum cleanup, they actually started drilling holes today at Public Works. Columbia County Jail, I'm gonna do a separate presentation after this, Mr. Chairman, on the jail. Thomas Camp Road. This is a very important point. It is going to affect everything we do as it relates to roadwork. Thomas Camp Road, we're touching a little bit of wetlands. Rule four-oh-four, if you would have asked me what that was six months ago, I didn't know. I now understand it's affecting the projects huge. So, back in the day, we bumped into a piece of wetland. Everybody got together, got Water Management District, figured out what we had to do, if anything, mitigation, et cetera, et cetera. Water Management District now has an inter-local agreement with D E P. Mr. Jimmy Pippin's in the room who represents North Florida Professional Services. He, he's the one that educated me on it all. So he's much more in tune than I am. In a nutshell, he educated me that D O T eighteen counties has lost seven projects because of this. They're not issuing any permits. Six, eight months. He worked in many other counties. It's affecting everything. So whether it be Mayo Road, um, English Road, Thomas Camp Road, we bump into a section of wetland and it's so overboard, even a cross train extension, Mr. Williams, in your district on Queen Road. If they consider you touch a little Cypress Street, they are not issuing a permit. And it's my, so Mr. Pippin tells me they've worked from Tallahassee back down and nobody can do anything about it. So if y'all want any more detail, I'd recommend Jimmy to help us with that, but it is a big deal. So when we talk about timeline of projects, for example, you're gonna hear me talk about English Road a little bit. We're close, right? We got property identified, Center of Mr. Dick's, roadway acquisition, all that. So we're right on schedule. We bump into that one sliver of wetland. I'm of the opinion, based on what I'm in tune, you might be six, eight months a year.
Kevin, uh, I, I understand what you're saying, but this is shutting down, uh, a counter to the ability to do work. Uh, I, I, I don't know the, the reason that, uh, that it went from twenty real world management to D E P. Apparently, it's something that's wrong in the system somewhere. I don't know why they don't have the personnel to, uh, to, to issue these permits and all, but it's shutting down construction. If it's a wetland, a wetland involved in it, you don't get a permit. And then you can't get anybody to tell you when you might get a permit.
Mr. Kirby, can I ask you something? Is it, is it gonna affect our, the mega side at all, or we?
Sure.
It's gonna affect everything?
Yes, sir. Bottom line is, used to we dealt with the man of the district. Now, what a man of the district passes off to D E P. And for whatever reason, Mr. Pittman told me that D O T has lost seven projects because of it. As he indicated, his tenure with D O T, if you lost a project, that was a fireable offense. They've lost seven.
So who do we contact about writing a letter to them and letting them know what, you know, we're just?
The Governor's Office.
I think we need to be in the Governor's Office.
Yeah.
Next week.
Jimmy Pittman representing North Florida. I can tell you that, um, it's bad. Uh, it used to be bad when the Corps was in charge of wetland permitting, and we all thought that the state was gonna do us a favor by taking it over to streamline the process and reduce redundancy between them and the water manager. It went from bad to much worse. And this is kind of a synopsis of my experience, what I've given y'all. Um, in the past, it was done by the Corps, and they always took forever. But there was some sense of, of common sense and reasonableness when you went out and you looked at these sites, and if they were marginal wetlands and they were minor impacts, the Corps never required mitigation. And they had sense about whether it was a, um, the reason they're supposed to be jurisdictional, if you have a perennial connection to a navigable water, that is being taken to the extreme by D E P. Where they're basic, they'll look at something and say, if they can get in the like, the karst lime rock environment underneath the ground, it can get out to the ocean. It's that crazy. So you can read this, in essence, Florida asked for the assumption of wetland permitting to streamline it. Under the Trump administration, there was a rule called the navigable waters protection rule that was passed by Congress, the intent of which was to provide some common sense in wetland permitting, where if it was minor impacts, that really weren't supposed to go through all this hassle. And it was supposed to clarify what was a jurisdictional wetland versus one D E P what it's supposed to mess with. In a nutshell, uh, when they got the assumption approved by the Trump administration, and it's December of twenty twenty, from what I'm told, on January the second, Army Corps picked up everything they had in boxes which they hadn't touched the whole time it was being debated. They dumped it in D E P's lap to the tune of six or seven hundred permits. Everything they had, whether it'd been in the system for a year or two months, those people had to start over from scratch. D E P wasn't prepared for the volume. They don't have the technical staff on board now to go out and do all this and get it caught up. Um, that being said, there's been a lot of conversation, as you can imagine, from all the uproars creating. Um, the head of D E P says he's hearing you. He's hiring more staff. They're gonna get the process worked out, and it's all gonna be good. The big picture is that eventually they give both responsibilities to the Water Management District. And then you've got one agency to deal with, and it's all kind of condensed. The reality of my experience over the last four months has been this. Um, Water Management District signed an interlocal agreement with D E P saying anytime they got an application that mentioned a wetland, they immediately notify D E P. So if you think you want to go get a dusty roads permit, and you mentioned that they're on the perimeter, there's a little wet spot that we're not impacting, they send notice to D E P. D E P sends you back a notice, says, I hear you're doing a project with a wetland. Um, D E P tells you they want you to waive the thirty day response requirement. We're gonna work together with the Water Management District, so let's waive that time requirement, meaning we can take as long as we want. And they are. Um, they demand that you have a joint field meeting to verify wetland lines. So they want you, D E P representatives and Water Management District representatives, to all be out there and look at the lines and agree on them and assess quality of the wetland. The first one I did took nine months to happen. Right now, you can expect it to be between four and five months for the field meeting. Four or five months just to go out there and look at it. For all the ones I've been involved with, roughly eight to ten, every little spot at the end of a culvert is considered a jurisdictional wetland by them. I could show you pictures. It's mowed front lawn that makes you wonder why there's even a pipe there. Wetland and jurisdictional. We've argued with them till we're blue in the face about how in the world they could consider that a perennial connection to a navigable water. We consider everything jurisdictional. You prove us wrong. Then they'll hand you a stack of this stuff called a WOTUS determination report. It's about that thick. You do it for every cross train extension. So in a nutshell, they're saying it's all jurisdictional, and you are going to mitigate for it. The Corps never made you mitigate for these little minor impacts. The new rule that D E P wrote says we will, when necessary, to avoid major impact. And I've asked them over and over, how is this a major impact? Silence. I had a picture of a mowed lawn that the county had just mowed and herbicited, and they're telling me there's a major ecological impact at that point, and I'm saying it's herbicide. But that's where we are. We personally had meetings as a firm with Congressman Dunn, Senator Bradley, Representative Brandon, uh, Representative Clemens, Representative Shoef. They've asked us to keep them in the loop, and we are. Um, we've had a meeting face to face with the current D E P interim director, John Truitt. He seems like a good guy. He says he's telling his staff people to follow the national waters protection rule, which is supposed to make it easier. It ain't happening at the staff level. So I hate to say it, but in a nutshell, if you've got a roadway project or site development that's got a hint of water on it, you're gonna probably have to deal with them, and it is going to be costly and, uh, and time consuming. And I hate to say that's the best report I can give, but it is. So one last thing I'll say is in the back of this little handout that I gave you, it, it's a, it's a handout from the National Navigable Waters Protection Rule, and it shows examples of things that should not be considered a jurisdictional wetland. And if you'll notice, it says most roadway ditches. They're just ignoring that. Um, I haven't shown them the end of a culvert yet that they didn't declare as a navig- I mean, as a jurisdictional wetland. So all these projects, and I probably have ten to fifteen held up because there's no money to go for the mitigation funding. Um, the first one I had a hundred thousand dollars in mitigation. We, I mean, you either gonna stop the project, pay it, and you don't have anything left. So I don't know what the answer is. I hope there's some relief. I hope it gets to the right people and something has changed, that they get back a little bit more in line with where we were before. But, um, it's serious.
And then response come from the Governor's Office.
I'm assuming he's been made aware of it, but I, I don't know. I'm not seeing a lot of action yet. I got another meeting with him next week. Uh, you know, it's an all-day meeting and affair out in the field, and, um, very frustrating. So.
Mr. Chairman, we, we don't have time. I mean, we've got all these utility projects in the works, road paving, everything. We don't have time. I mean, this is just too much damn government. At some, at some point, somebody's gotta push back. I mean, and what the hell happens if, you know, my little English Road project does touch a ditch, and we go ahead and pave over it? I mean, go ahead and do it anyway.
I could give you an example that I, I'm not involved in, but a fellow engineer is doing a lar- or going to do a large development in Jacksonville. It's over eight hundred acres, big money, a big money developer. They called, uh, they had their wetlands guy go out and delineate, well-respected guy. He came up with twenty-three acres of wetlands. When D E P was through, they had seven hundred and fifty acres of wetlands. And he's like, so he was, my word was he was, he was suing them, suing D E P. But that's, it's happening everywhere. And eventually, they're gonna piss off the wrong person, and I guess we'll see something happen, but.
I think we need to be the wrong people to piss off.
Well, I can tell you that Taylor, Gilchrist, Dixie, Baker, all those commissions are in the same boat, and they're all talking to their representatives, and, and quite frankly, we've been feeding them everything we can get. Um.
Well, at, at the rate that, that the impact that this is having, it, it shut down economic development. Completely shuts it down.
Well, you can get a permit, but you gotta buy mitigation. And in these rural areas where you can't go to a bank, you know, you have to go out there and buy property to create a wetland, and then you get the five-year monitoring requirement, just tons of money. So you can get it permitted, but you're gonna have to go through a lot of hoops and do stuff you wouldn't ordinarily want to do.
Just because Jimmy failed to mention it, for those of you that were at your last Economic Development Board meeting, you know, this was the exact subject discussed. You've got permitting issues with your projects, and I find that to be a shame because I know each and every one of you has worked hard, busted your hump to try to create some economic development opportunities. But again, I just feel like as a citizen, I need to tell you, this same issue is affecting those projects. And you're not going to get permits under the current scenario. So again, I think it'd be wise to have your staff evaluate those to make sure that there is some uh, meeting of the minds on the amount of properties that are considered wetlands within those projects. As Jimmy said, they can be mitigated, but it does add cost. But, uh, in addition to utilities, in addition to road projects, this is affecting your economic development projects.
I know.
And, and what Dale and Jimmy does says is exactly correct to the fact that Jimmy hit the nail on the head. We're, we're dealing with an interim D E P person. He ain't gonna make no waves. He wants a job after the new guy gets there. And, and, and I know, I think I know where to, I ain't putting words in your mouth, Toby, but, uh, what, what the hell are they gonna do if we touch some wetlands?
That's my point.
So apparently, we can do a resolution, we can do this, but let's take one of these smaller projects that we may get into a third of an acre or whatever. Let's, let's, let's make the headline.
Let's just do it, yes.
You know, because you may get some attention.
We got a bail bondsman right here.
Yeah. Everybody's scared, you know. We, we consider and talk, just like Jimmy does say, you talk to Dunn, you talk to this one, that, you know, you're, it's falling on deaf ears. Guys, I, I, I'm not gonna go with a great tidbit. I had a guy on a river lot the other day on his hands and knees for forty-eight minutes, digging a hole with a thing that a kid plays with on a beach, then taking this little piece of plastic and doing that, and then knifing it off to determine what percentage of wetlands is on the bank of the Swanee frickin' River. That's crazy, you know, but i- i- and this is the same stuff that Jimmy and I go through every day. So, hey, Toby, that's where you're going? I, I'm with you, buddy. I ain't got no problem roughing feathers in Tallahassee. Cause, uh, yeah, I'm ready.
Well, here, here, I, I, I agree with permission of wit. Uh, they, they, they might put us in jail, but by God, we gonna move forward.
We'll be roommates.
Yeah.
Okay.
We gonna move forward.
We'll get Gwen and Brendan to bring us some good.
We're not gonna shut down this county because we got so much bureaucracy in, in Tallahassee that we cannot get things done.
Right there, Ron, of the, the five hundred acres we just bought. We're ate up with it out there. Heck, we ain't even gonna be able to drive a truck out there without getting a permit. You know, and I, I, if, uh, that's the road we all wanna take. You got two boats, I think.
Yeah, I think that's what my comment, somebody needs to push back, is exactly what I'm talking about. We need to, especially if it's one of our little projects, let's just do it. I'll take the top bunk, Ron.
Yeah. Okay. Thank you, Jimmy. Thank you, Dale. And Jimmy did a very good job, but that's the ring, reason I wanted to bring it to this board's attention. We can do all the planning and work that we want to, but when you bump into that kind of a wall, that's a deal changer. But I think I've heard, Director, that you want us to go.
One thing about it, you make the headlines, they're gonna, uh, they're gonna have to defend why they didn't approve the project.
Hey, look at the attention. Look at the attention we got that day that I tried to get us to not give a Comcast a permit. We've talked to the next day what we did.
Yes. I think when you do that, the other counties will jump on board, start doing the same thing, and what are they gonna do?
Let me, along those lines, about two weeks ago, they told me that for some reason, about four hundred permits had gotten withdrawn.
So basically, they just went ahead and done one.
Just went ahead and did it. Did it anyway.
Don't know what they did, but they withdrew.
Yeah.
So when I go to, when the bail bondsman comes, gets me out of the federal asylum, I'm like, Jimmy Pittman told me this.
Okay.
I don't, I don't, I don't know how you let the federal government or the, or the, or Tallahassee handcuffs you county. I just don't know. You, obviously, you got to fight back on that.
There's not many projects in Columbia County or anywhere that we're doing anything don't have wetland touching, especially out there.
Mr. Chairman, I want to reemphasize what Mr. Pittman said. A simple cross train extension on an existing paved road is triggering permitting.
By their rules, everything's got wetlands.
We're not doing dirt paved conversions only. We're talking repaving a road. It's triggering, we've never considered mitigation on repaving a road. You'll go broke.
Yeah.
Okay. Supervisors of election improvements, at the last meeting, the board voted to increase the rent to cover the improvements, so that process is moving. Station fifty-one expansion, waiting on a material cost, come back in. Public Works Equipment Barn, waiting on building, metal building quote. And gentlemen, let me remind us, we just got these monies approved in October, so there's law of ordering and all that good stuff's going on right now. Jail admin design is in the design phase. Courthouse B D A, waiting to confirm with the contractor, scheduling date. Jail B D A, Motorola will need to walk the site, uh, to take measurements for installation. Utilities master plan, waiting on data from the city of Lake City. Mayo Road, plans are sixty percent complete. Property has been identified and prepared for the roadway acquisition agent. Double run road, plans are ninety percent complete. Property has been identified and ready to go to the roadway acquisition agent. Kicklot Road, substantial complete, good project within budget, punching it out right now. English L M area, plans are seventy percent complete. They have been sent to our property acquisition agent. Hillcrest is under contract, it could be completed by Christmas of this year. Baskin Norris Drive and two forty-seven in the design phase. This is the one we partnered up with F dot, project set for twenty twenty-six construction. I did not include the full lot utilities. At the time of this writing, it wasn't all approved, approved. It will be back at the next update. So on the county side of things, twenty-one million, four hundred and twelve thousand, twelve point six has been expended, roughly eight point eight left. Mr. Chairman, that concludes your quarterly property capital project update.
Kevin, once you gonna, at this time, you gonna do an additional presentation on the jail?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
I just make sure everybody's good before we go.
Okay. Ms. Limney, you ready to speak?
Okay.
Ms. Limney, before you start, I'm, I'm gonna tell you, I'm, I'm gonna do this a way that we're all fair to everybody, and everybody gets speakers. We love for people to come and speak to us.
Okay.
Um, the rule is two minutes. At the end of two minutes, you hear the beeper. You've been here before, you know. At two minutes and twenty seconds, I'll stop you. So I'm, I'm gonna give you twenty seconds to close with the two minutes, okay?
Okay.
All right, because we want to make it fair for everybody. We don't want anybody to go over anybody else, you know.
Well, if I have questions, are you going to answer them at the end?
At the end, at the end, give us your questions, and we'll, we'll get those done.
Um, Barbara Limley, on the agenda for tonight is the purchase of a half acre parcel on the Branford Highway. The seller purchased the property one year ago for thirty-nine thousand, two hundred dollars. The property appraiser on their assessment has it assessed at thirty-five thousand, two hundred. The seller, according to the information in the packet, has. The seller, according to the information in the packet, had a contract to sell for a hundred and forty-nine, five. During the closing, it was determined that the rezoning was denied on June twenty-second, twenty fifteen. Now the seller would like the county to buy the property for a hundred and forty-nine thousand, five hundred dollars. Period. Here's the question. How did the seller approach the county to buy this property? Stop the clock. You guys got a question?
No, okay, you're, you're done with your?
Well, that's done with my speech, now I have my question.
Okay, okay, I didn't know if that was the end of it. Okay, is anybody? Want to speak to that?
I think that's a question for a longer.
So the gentleman, one of the gentlemen who owns the property is Brian Linton. Um, I declared a conflict on this and referred the matter to Mr. Kraus and Mr. Kirby.
It came to us because the property owner who does have a contract for purchase felt that um, it was a situation that if we did not resolve it, he would proceed with legal action.
Ms. Limley, maybe Mr. Kirby can answer your question a little better because he's, he's speaking about this. I just wanted you to ask, you know, do your speech before.
Well, my other, you know, question, you know, Kraus said that um, someone screwed up. And I looked at the old minutes where it was denied in June twenty-second, twenty fifteen. How did he ever think it was owned commercial?
The particular person went to the property appraiser's office and where he found documentation signed by the county commission that it was and sealed by the clerk where it was approved. So upon seeing that, he had every right to believe that it was actually approved, even though it had not.
Well, when I contacted the property appraiser's office this afternoon, she said, we don't have information like that. It shows a warehouse on there because the guy that previously owned the property, you know, must have done something, you know, automotively. But she said, we don't have anything showing what you, or what he said there's, you know, the price of a hundred and forty-nine thousand, five? Did he bring a contract? Are there any appraisals on this value for this value? And I think, you know, some of these things need to be answered before you guys approve a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars for a half an acre. And what is the purpose of buying this property?
Ms. Limley, I think Mr. Mr. Kirby can enlighten, lighten us on some of this.
In addition, it's, you'll get a lot of these answers later when it comes up on the agenda.
That's what I was gonna say, Ms. Chair, we, we, we thought she was gonna speak about something in the capital project update because.
Okay, I thought we had FDOT funded.
She's actually speaking on Mr. Kirby's number three, so maybe we wait till we get there.
Yeah, I thought the funded projects was first, I didn't.
Mr. Chairman, with your permission, we will do a detailed presentation in a few minutes on that.
Thank you.
Okay, thank you.
Thank you, Ms. Limley. We got a little out of order.
Okay. Before we get started with our jail project, I'm very pleased to announce we're gonna open early. We're gonna be a little north of three hundred thousand dollars on the good side of things. This is a good project, I'm very proud to say that before we get started. So for those of you who haven't followed this, this is a two hundred and fifty-six bed housing pod addition to the existing jail. So we've got our admin building, this is a pod. Sixteen plus million dollars guaranteed maximum price. Two significant changes, revised secured vestal solution was designed, priced and approved. An alternate recreation yard design priced approved. So November, building one hundred percent closed in and conditioned space finishing trades are in progress. Installation of detention door hardware in progress. Electrical plumbing and HVAC trim out, security electronics, wiring and devices. Project time was eighteen months, six months site work plus twelve months for the building. First of November, day four thirty-one of five oh eight or eighty-five percent complete. Total cost to date at twelve point three million. So in July, last time we did an update, masonry ongoing, second floor slab fifty percent still installed, masonry for slabs. Total billing at seven point one. August interior structure, MEP overhead, roofing and EIFS patch. Stairs and railings, total billing at eight million. September detention door hardware, ready for permanent power, interior structure at ninety-five percent, total billing at eight point five. In October, permanent power on detention hardware ongoing, water heaters installed, connectors at ninety percent. Finishes have started, nine point three to date. So once again, in conclusion, we should open up mid-February ahead of schedule. Three hundred plus thousand dollars north to the good. Okay? So Mr. Chairman, very pleased to say this has been a good project for us. Okay. May I move on, sir? Or is there any questions? Any questions about capital projects? Okay. On this particular item, Mr. Chair, I'm not requesting a vote, I'm requesting direction. The reason I'm doing this tonight, it will set the tone for the next meeting, which I'm coming in with scraps, cops, SIGB submissions and some candidates for county funded road paving. So the county has secured two projects for FDOT funding, which is County Road Six at two point six four million in July of twenty twenty, twenty twenty-three, rather. Burley Road at two point nine eight two million, available in twenty twenty-four. So long story short, I reached out to DOT. Both of these roads are in very poor condition. In my opinion, you have three choices. They're being flexible for us. You can simply wait till the monies are available in the prospective years, that's option one. Option two, you can utilize your current paving money available to fund these projects. That would deplete your paving money today. Or you could borrow your money out of reserves, fund the projects. DOT has promised us they will reimburse us in the prospective years in multiple installments. So I just need direction from this board, because if you tell me tonight, wait, that's okay. You tell them we're gonna finance it, that's another mindset.
Mr. Wayne?
Boy, I uh, uh, had a conversation with, with Kevin on this, uh, on this item, also with David. And we have money in our reserves that we still have to do Burley Road and take Road Six and be reimbursed by DOT when that's funding cycle come around.
Mr. Chair, go ahead, go ahead, go ahead, Rob.
Yeah, I, I agree with Commissioner Williams. I mean, I've traveled Road Six the other day and uh, I think we should go ahead if we, if we capable and fix that road. And I think we can get by till twenty twenty-four for the money for, or twenty twenty-three for the money for that one. And, and if we got the money for Burley Road, I think if we go ahead and fix Burley now, we're gonna save money in the long run. Because if we wait till twenty twenty-four to do Burley, we're gonna probably do reconstruction on that road.
And Commissioner, you're exactly right. And that's DOT recognized that, and that's why they're being very flexible, the way they're allowing us these options.
I, to your point, Commissioner Ford, I think we're also gonna save money because we're gonna buy, we're gonna do it now before things continue to go up even more. We've got the money, the money to loan ourselves. I think all of us get calls on State Road Six and it's Commissioner Williams district, but we all hear about it. So I'm in, I'm in favor of borrowing from ourselves and go ahead and knocking these two out.
Mr. Chair, I'd make the motion to.
We don't, we don't need a motion.
No, sir, I just needed clear direction, I think I've got that here.
Yeah, I, this is a no-brainer here.
Okay.
Especially with the point of costing more money and with what DEP is doing, let's just.
Commissioner Murphy, the intent was to get my direction so I can move forward with other jobs.
And this is the kind of forward thinking that I like to see, and I hope we do more of it in the future.
Thanks, sir. Okay, thank y'all.
But you did say one thing I'll bring to your attention, Kevin. DOT promised, get it right.
Oh, yes, I already have, I already have. Okay. All right. The next item is what Mrs. Limley was referring to. So before I do the PowerPoint, let's capture what happened. Investor goes and buys property. According to his attorney, investor do, does due diligence, goes to property appraiser to validate its commercial. Property taxes for three years were paid at a commercial rate. Everybody says commercial. Then chair of this board, then clerk of the county, chair sign, clerk contested, investor buys. Investor gets ready to sell, has person on the hook to sell, takes it all the way to the closing. That person is doing their due diligence, bumps into the fact it is not commercial. PNZ said, take it to commercial, the board at that time, five oh, shot it down. Somehow paperwork was signed by the then-chair, attested by the clerk. Attorney, person that currently owns property, says it's real simple. Somebody messed up. I had a sale price of a hundred and forty-nine, five. Y'all can either buy the building, we'll see you in the courtroom. Long story short, there is a diamond in every rough. We've talked many times about what used to be our sign shop being a traffic signal operation, that's where we're going, right? We eliminated contract work, we're now in the traffic light business. We bought trucks, hired folks, qualified folks. I was going as soon as we built the barn at Public Works to close in a large area to accommodate that part of what we do. Second part, that geographical area is prone to drainage problems, everybody knows that. Every time the rainy season comes, dragon hose, hoses, all that good stuff. I'm a little cautious when I say what I'm gonna recommend, as she indicated. It's a half acre with a metal building, no doubt. But in my opinion, Mr. Foreman has to conflict out, that means you're gonna hire a lawyer, right? There is a cold hard fact that it was a huge mistake made in oh fifteen. So I think we're here to weigh out, do we wanna spend a hundred and fifty thousand dollars to have a building we can put our traffic shop in, our drainage stuff? Or do we wanna pay lawyers to fight with, in my humble opinion, I'm not a lawyer, there was a mistake made, okay? So with that, we'll get started. So on June twenty-two of fifteen, the board unanimously denied requests from residential to commercial. Somehow executed by chair of the board and attested by the clerk that it was approved. June twenty-sixth, twenty-one, contract was signed, sale price of one forty-nine, five. It was learned, the board denied the request in fifteen, therefore property could not be used for commercial use. The corner, current owner would like to sell the above property to Columbia County for sale price of one forty-nine, five. David and I received a real strong letter from his attorney that says, if you guys do not do this, then we'll see you in a quarter.
Let me ask you, Mr. Kirby, what would it cost us to build a building that we need for the lighting, for lights now?
Mr. Alderworth, I'm not priced, it would not be a hundred and fifty thousand dollars by no means, okay? But I, once again, you gotta weigh your options. Mr. Foreman cannot represent us because he has to conflict, you're gonna hire an attorney. Now, he could probably speak better to what that might cost than I can. And I would logically assume, I've never seen us be in a lawsuit for less than twenty-five or fifty.
Can you comment on that, Mr. Foreman?
What, what you're probably gonna spend?
What it would cost?
Fifteen, twenty thousand, I think.
Your chair? Go ahead, Rob.
It seems that we've finally ourselves caught between a rock and a hard place. Now, how it happened, I, 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 I don't know. But uh, uh, it was voted down, zoning and planning board uh, voted unanimously to change that zoning to a commercial. It was appealed to the board, I remember this, and it was voted down, the appeal was voted down. So there was an appeal, the board overrode the decision of the zoning and planning board and denied the request. Now, how this staff get it all wrong, I don't know. But the chairman at that time signed the documents that stated that it was approved by the Board of County Commission. And, and the clerk uh, protested that, that signature by signing it also. So any citizen or person that would look at what they found from the clerk's office, that it was signed by the Columbia County Board of County Commission's chair and the clerk of the court, would say, I have a piece of commercial property here. But during the, the process of verifying everything, that is when they found that, that it was not a legitimate signature by the chairman and the clerk, because the board denied the request to change it to commercial. Now, how that happened, I don't know.
Go ahead.
Mr. Chairman, I, we made a mistake and, and he's out money, you know, I, I get that. I just, I, I questioned, I questioned the damages. Um, he, he bought the property for what, thirty-something thousand dollars? So, you know, that's really all he's out. And, and maybe he's entitled to appreciation on it from now to then. But because he now can't sell it for a hundred and forty-nine thousand, you know, that's not his damages. He's only out of his pocket what he paid for it and what it's worth now. So I would have no problem selling, willing to buy the property at what it's actually worth now by appraisal, not based on what he could get for if it's commercial. But, you know, I, I mean, he's, a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars is not his damage, that's not what, that's not, that's not what he's out of pocket. And I have a hard time, you know, putting taxpayer money into this to settle in this way. Lawyer fees fifteen thousand dollars, I mean, I think my argument's pretty compelling, but.
I, I tend to agree with Commissioner Whit. If he, if you wanna get an appraisal on the property and buy this property for appraisal value, I have no problem with that. We did make a mistake. I think he's out money, uh, he's paid property taxes on it for a while. So, so, you know, it, it, I, I say we get an appraisal, we make a fair offer for the appraisal, for what the appraisal is. And if he don't wanna accept that, then I think we should, I mean, I think any reasonable judge would see that as a fair offer.
The, uh, I'm sorry, the, the uh, with the appraisal, we already have a policy in place, correct me if I'm wrong, Joe, that says that you, us as a board can buy property for the appraisal value. Of course, we've got stipulation in there, we can opt to pay more for it, whatever reason, correct?
When you go out to acquire property, yeah, this is, the context of this is a threat of litigation, so this is really a settlement, is what this would be.
Well, I, I, I'd have to uh, I'd have to agree with Toby and Rocky. My, my biggest question that I haven't been able to get answered, what steps have we taken as a county to prevent this in the future? Do we have a plan in place tonight? Because this same situation could be going on as we speak, the, the, I, I know where the burden lays. Uh, you know, I've done my homework, I know that, you know, we're all human, we make mistakes. Uh, but the uh, you've got a you, you, you know, you buy by appraisal, you sell by appraisal, it's just that simple.
I think what you're saying is we need to make sure we direct staff and make sure this never happens again. Study it, find out what happened, and let's don't ever happen. But I, I'm, I'm gonna reckon that in just a second, I'm sorry, Rob. But I see both sides of this. Man had an offer a hundred and forty-nine thousand dollars, he thought he had property that was on commercial. And, and I see his side of it and I see his lawyer's side of it. So there's, you know, I, I can kinda tell why he's angered, but I also see why the county is in a tough spot. So I, I just wanna make sure we don't do it again, you know?
I can honestly say I've never seen anything that was voted five oh down that was executed as approved.
Go ahead, Ms. Wayne.
This, I, I, I cannot recall a situation like this happening since I've been a county commissioner. And when we say who fought it is, you, and everybody that's been chair know this happens.
That's true.
You go in, they call you and say, we got all the paperwork for you to sign from the board meeting. And they lay it out in front of you, write your name on it, write your name on it, you sign it, you sign it, you sign it, you sign it. Once it's signed, they go to the clerk and they see the chair signature on it, they don't have a reason to question it.
He is incompetent, yeah.
He gives them confidence, yeah.
So it's, it's one of those things that where at that time, the chair didn't catch it. Uh, uh, so, you know, I, 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 I don't know. I, I just, I mean, he just behooves me that this happened. And it took this long to, 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 to find it on once the property was sold. But, but I, I, I agree, you can see both sides of the picture. But a hundred and forty nine, a hundred fifty thousand dollars is a lot of money to pay for something that did not value at fifty thousand dollars.
And I would, I would, I would just say too, I'm sure he was here the night of the meeting and he knew it was voted down five to zero. So.
He's not the same guy. He's not the same guy. He bought it for off the courthouse steps. The guy who made the application was out of the picture. This guy was a, this guy bought this property off the courthouse steps.
For thirty five thousand.
Whatever it was, I, I don't know.
So, but, so he wasn't here.
He was, he was not here with the meeting.
I, I didn't, I thought.
In trying to make his determination of whether to purchase the property or not, he tried to verify what, what its zoning was. And that's when he found the documentation that said it was on commercial, even though that documentation was erroneous.
And, but he did his diligence, you know, and no more different than probably anybody on this board has ever done. But I'm, I'm sitting here holding a form that will resolve your problem in the future. Because it was assumed back in two thousand fifteen that that was gonna pass. So just like right here, we may deal with this situation right here and we may not pass it. Well, this shouldn't even be prepared. And, you know, or either we need to shredder it at the table, you know? I'm just using that as a simple example. But that night of two thousand fifteen, if these documents weren't prepared to be signed at this meeting or the next morning. Or like Ron's saying, I know they ran me and you down before to sign. Time sensitive, I get it, I understand it. But it's not necessary before them doors get locked tonight that that paper's signed, in my opinion. And that would have prevented this in the future.
Mr. Chairman, I, I, I make a motion that we have the property appraised. We look at what expense the buyer have as far as the taxes he had paid on it. Give him, and once we do that, we make him an offer with something for your trouble.
Have a motion, do I have a second?
Second.
Have a motion in a second. All in favor? Say aye. All opposed, no.
And then if we go to court, we just go to court.
Mr. Chair, to, to address the question, I did talk to Mr. Stubbs about this issue. With his planning and zoning work, he always had, like, like Mr. Murphy says, he always has his stuff all drafted up and ready to go. He's gonna put a check in there where he's gonna have a space for approved as the form and correctness for me. So that I'll have to sign off on these two. So that'll at least add a third set of eyes. But I completely agree with Mr. Murphy. And, and that's one of the reasons we've started doing this. We bring these documents and they're provided to me. And as you guys are going through approving and denying things, I do just like you say, if it doesn't pass, I scratch it out. So we're gonna try to do better on that. This is just a classic example. You're right, Mr. Williams, forever and ever, the chair comes in on Friday morning. They put a big, I mean, sometimes that's stats like that. And you sign everywhere there's a tab. And then the clerk goes through and they sign everywhere there's a tab. I think what happened here was one of those documents got executed and it went rogue. And once it's executed and it goes rogue, people who see that rely on it sometimes. So we have definitely addressed the issue. I, I don't think this could happen again, frankly.
In addition, after every board meeting, the next morning, we have a recap with all of staff on what the board approved and didn't approve. And entering the, the board's decisions into the computer system. So we're reviewing this before the clerk ultimately sends it out.
Well, like Glenn's been here many times on grant proposals. Remember, you gotta be there the next day and, and you know, we, and you, you can understand that, you know? It's kind of outside the box, but it's all out here in the, in the clear, you know? So, but I can remember economic development doing that on several occasions in the past.
I'm sure the procedures were back in two thousand fifteen, but we have added a couple of layers of procedures since then.
I do not recall many times that P and Z recommendation did not get passed by board. That it's a rare exception.
Yeah, yeah.
And I completely agree with you. I've seen it a hundred times, the paperwork was prepared as if it was done.
Right.
But what Mr. Kraus indicated is those Friday morning meetings after a board meeting, staff caption goes over, that used to not be done. I think that's another insurance policy, as Mr. Foreman indicated, plus he, I don't think there's anything perfect, but I think there's a couple of measures in there. But I've never seen this happen ever.
And we trust you all to work this out. We know it'll get taken care of, but your next thing is DOT, right?
Yes, sir.
Okay.
Okay, here's.
Ms. Limley, Ms. Limley, if you want to speak on this, public comment at the end, if you want to speak on it again. Okay, all right, go ahead, Ms. Limley.
Mr. Kraus said it was bought on the courthouse steps, but usually that says the Whit Kason, but this said from Swanson to Ruffo and Minton. And when they bought this property, they bought it, you know, assuming it was maybe the seller, you know, didn't convey proper information to Ruffo and Linton or Minton when, when they bought it. And I think there just needs to be documentation saying that they did have a contract from somebody for a hundred and fourteen. Ask for the backup, ask for the paper before you guys do it, you know? He may have just said somebody wanted to buy it for a hundred and forty nine thousand. We don't know because you don't have anything.
Ms. Limley, I think we've made the decision to do that with a lawyer. So we're going, we're going to do exactly what you're saying. Thank you, ma'am. Thank you, Mr. Kirby.
Okay, final item of consideration for me this evening is FDOT has requested connect the I seventy five rest area to the county's water system in Ellisville. In fourteen, we built a twelve inch water main on October road that lies two hundred foot from this rest area. When built, we installed a tee for future connection at the rest area. FDOT proposes installing a three inch meter, reports average daily usage of eleven thousand eight hundred thirteen gallons per day, maximum seventeen four thirty three. Adding the rest area will allow the county to reduce the amount of flushing needed on the water system. So for those of y'all that don't know, we have so much water, we had to flush it out on a record basis. So everything about this is good news. FDOT has requested have the total application charges for the capacity and connection charges of thirty six two fifty waived. And establish a flat government rate of two thousand a month contractually for five years. If you do the bath, it's pretty much a wash. They've also promised that as soon as we've got the capacity for sewer, they're ready to hook up on sewer. So everything's good about this. Mr. Chairman, recommend a motion to approve the request to connect the seventy five rest area. Waive the capacity and connection charge of thirty six two fifty, establish a flat government rate of two thousand per month for five years. So moved.
Second. Got a motion in a second. All approved, say aye.
Thank you, sir.
All opposed?
You want to get her name?
Yeah, yeah, yeah. We're gonna have Ms. Bell, I believe, was it, Ms. Bell? Come on up. We sorry, we, we know the traffic was bad.
Oh.
I'm way pretty.
We should have took her name tag, what is her? We sure don't want nobody taking out Oliver.
Oh, y'all wrong.
I am from Fort Water, really.
Okay, good evening, Mr. Chair, members of the board. I do apologize for my tardiness. As you heard, traffic was terrible. I think there was an accident over one of the bridges on I seventy five, so they shut down a huge swap fit and had to go a long way around. But I am here tonight to give y'all an update on where we stand with the North Florida Mega Industrial Park Wastewater Treatment Facility. Off the bat, I want to apologize, the wrong date is on the plan set that you have in front of you. But this is the DEP permitting plan set that we did provide to DEP to get the wastewater treatment plant permit. And the good news is, Mr. Williams worked with your procurement folks to get the permit notice advertised on November twenty third. And we spoke with DEP and expect to receive a draft permit this week, which is huge. That is one of the biggest steps in the process to getting a new wastewater treatment facility up and running. And so having that permitting process locked in is really key. As soon as you receive that draft permit application for, excuse me, not the application, the actual draft permit itself from DEP. That opens up a forty five day window of public comment. And once that closes, we will have our permit barring any changes or public comments that need to be addressed. And that's what will let us go out to bid. And so we are currently on track and we're feeling very confident about going out to bid with this project in January. And the only reason you don't have final plan sets in front of you today is because DEP has made comments during the permitting process. And so once they issue that draft permit, we'll need to incorporate some of those modifications into our final plan set. Just to make sure we've covered all of those changes that they're asking us to make and then we'll be ready to go. So at that time, I can bring up a full permit set for y'all. And so I apologize for the wrong date, but this is the permitting set that that permit will be based on. It's a hundred eighteen pages long in total, I believe. And then this is the technical specification package. It's normally not printed double sided, but I did it to save a tree today. This is nine hundred and fifty four pages long. So we have been working very hard to get a lot of information together for y'all. And just to kind of clarify some of the delays we've encountered along the way. I'm sure you heard that the Basin Management Action Plan for the Lower Santa Fe and Inche Techne that had been challenged and was basically under consideration for two and a half years, I think, was finally adopted again in May. And the challenge with that BMAP being adopted in May is that it required any new plant to meet advanced wastewater treatment standards, which required us to redesign the plant. So we had to put in a significant amount of effort to change our package plant facility to meet those AWT standards. But the good news is we applied for multiple grants that were intended to cover that additional effort as well as some of the construction costs. And if you hadn't heard, within the last month, we received word that y'all are getting a two point nine million dollar grant from DEP to go towards this project. And that's from the Water Protection Fund that we submitted earlier this year, working with Mr. Kraus. So that's really exciting between the DEO grant and that DEP grant. You're at thirteen point one million dollars funded, all out of grant funding, nothing out of pocket for that portion of it. So that's really exciting. The other delay that we had in the process was with the interim spray field that we've been talking about. So as you know, long term, we intend to have a deep injection well. But the permitting process through the Underground Injection Control Program at DEP is a beast. It takes a real long time to get that permit even issued. And then they require eighteen months or more of testing once you drill that well. And so knowing that, we wanted to get this up and running sooner. We've been working with Warehouser on doing an interim spray field site that would just be for approximately five years so that we could get this plant going as soon as possible. The initial site that was selected by Warehouser for our spray field, it turns out, does not have the right geological conditions to actually work as a spray field. We were gonna have to use close to four times the amount of property that we would have liked to use. And that was taking away from the economic development opportunities within the primary industrial park. And so we did work with Warehouser. They were very gracious and identified a new piece of property on the east side of the prison. But that meant we had to go out and do new survey and new geotechnical investigation. And we had to get a new environmental assessment and a new wetland assessment and a new listed species assessment and work with FWC and all that. But we did finally get the new spray field site approved as well. And that's going to be constructed in phases as a cost savings measure. So the idea is we'll construct the first hundred acres of the spray field so that the first businesses have somewhere to send the treated effluent. But if we get our deep injection well before we need more spray field capacity, we will have saved ourselves the cost of putting out that pipe and doing that construction. And again, once we do have the deep injection well, the intent is to decommission the spray field and then recoup as much of that material as we can. So you can either reuse the pipe or sell it for scrap and the Warehouser will get their property back. And so the only thing that is still in limbo with that is finalizing the easement documentation. We've been working with Mr. Williams on getting that covered. We made some comments on the agreement that we feel would protect the county in the long run with regard to your liability on that site. And I believe it's with your attorney. So that is being taken care of as well. And last but not least, schedule. So like I said, we are on track to go out to bid in January. That is just pending the easement agreement for the spray field as well as the land ownership of the plant property itself, the twenty acres within Warehouser's property and then the DEP permit. So the earliest we're anticipating getting that permit would be January seventh. But realistically, it's probably mid-January that we'll get the final permit in hand. And then we can go ahead and advertise that bid. The bid does need to be advertised for thirty days. And so depending on how quickly procurement can work through their process, we estimate bidding and contractor selection to take two to three months. And then we can go ahead and get those folks mobilized ASAP to get started on constructing the plant. We're looking at approximately twelve months for plant construction itself. But as you heard from Mr. Kirby and Mr. Pittman earlier, you know, construction prices have been going crazy. And we're seeing a lot of scheduling delays with getting folks mobilized on site. So we, you know, it was nine to twelve months originally, but we're hedging with twelve months, knowing that there have been significant challenges getting materials and getting everything out to the site. So that would lead us to plant construction being complete in the first quarter of two thousand twenty three. And that's, you know, as long as we get all the materials we need, we get everything on site, procurement moves along quickly. And as soon as the plant is constructed, we can start receiving flows from any new businesses within the park. There is a three month operation and startup phase of a plant. We're basically working out the bugs, working out the kinks. As of right now, we intend to get flows from the jail lift station that the city currently owns. It's approximately a hundred thousand gallons a day. And that'll give us the base flow that we need. But if there's a business who's ready to come into the park sooner, then we can use their flow instead for that operation and startup phase. So the first flows can be received at that new plant as early as first quarter two thousand twenty three. And we'll expect to be fully operational in the second quarter. Again, that's just to get your operators trained up and running and to make sure that we have all the kinks worked out at the plant itself. Last but not least, and the thing you're probably most waiting for, is the updated cost estimate. So again, as you've heard, four hundred percent increase in PVC prices in the last ninety days. I mean, we have vendors who won't hold prices for more than twenty four hours with some materials. It's really wild. And we've actually seen, to give you context, we have a lot of DEP grants with various clients that we're helping to facilitate. And DEP is actually asking us to slow play some of those projects, hoping that those construction costs will come back down. Because it's, you know, it's not just putting the strain on y'all, but it's also putting the strain on the state who has only a, a one pot of money in certain cases, and they're trying to stretch it as far as they can. So the total updated cost estimate that we are looking at is a range. We come up with the engineer's opinion of probable construction cost, but it is a range minus fifteen percent to plus twenty percent. Because again, we don't know what the costs are gonna be the day that the bid is put in by the vendor. Okay, just trying to manage your expectations. So the, the most up to date cost based on today's prices is seventeen point seven nine million. But the low end, the minus fifteen percent that I think is more realistic when we're actually gonna go out to bid and be buying these materials is fifteen point six million. On the high end, plus twenty percent, if things continue to go up, which we're hoping they won't, we're hoping to go back to normal, is twenty two. So today's numbers, our costs are up to seventeen. But my hope is that if things stabilize, it'll be more on the fifteen point six. And that's the number I gave Mr. Kraus two weeks ago, which is where we were before costs continued to go up in the last two weeks. So that is the overall update of the North Florida Mega Industrial Park Wastewater Treatment Facility. I'm happy to answer any questions about the plan set that you have in front of you. If you want to pass around this encyclopedia of specs or use it as a doorstop, you're more than welcome. But I'm happy to answer any questions you might have.
Mr. Chair? Any question, Ms. Wade?
Appreciate the work you all done on this project. But at this time, we as a commission is not able to wait and see a price is gonna come down. Things are moving very fast at the mega site.
Yes, sir.
And we, 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 we have to do what we need to do. And this vote has been committed that we're gonna do what we got to do to be in a position to, to kill industries that want to locate Columbia County at the mega site. The utility is there for them to hook to. to.
Yes, sir.
Is there anything that we might could buy in advance and go ahead and purchase some stuff that would be a cost savings?
Mr. Chair, yes, that's something we've talked about previously, and we had originally planned to work with Mr. Williams on some pre-purchase contracts. But a lot of the materials that we're seeing, the wild price fluctuations on, we would not recommend buying ahead. Like, you could buy a bunch of piping, for example, but if you have pipe just like laying down in your lay-down yard for a couple of months, and then that starts to deteriorate or it gets gunky or something goes wrong, then you're liable for the quality of that pipe when it goes in. And if something goes wrong, and a lot of contractors aren't super comfortable with using pre-purchased materials like that, especially with an unknown timeframe. And with the, the package plant style that we're going after, a lot of the things are fabricated together specifically for the project once the specs go out. And so at this time, with where we are in the process, I, I don't know that it would really save us time or money to preorder some of those bits and pieces. We had talked about it. We even drafted four separate, like, pre-purchase sort of purchase orders effectively. And then we talked about it, and we decided to kill that idea and just bid it out all at once. And there might be some efficiencies in the contractors doing that. And there are some contractors who are putting like pre-orders for materials, and they've kind of stockpiled stuff, but that's okay, because it's, you know, their liability. Whereas if you buy it, you have to hold the insurance on it. Something goes wrong, it's on you until you get that contractor in line. So I think we just decided that it was, the juice was not worth the squeeze on that, basically.
Any more discussion? So you're saying we can't buy anything? We, we really, you wouldn't recommend buying anything in advance?
Based on discussions I've had on similar projects, no. There have been a couple, like, in Lake City, we worked on a project where we had the city go ahead and preorder some pumps for their lift stations and the associated materials with those, but literally, that was it. All of the piping, all of the fittings, all of the valves, it, it made more sense to have all that ordered by the contractor in that case. I'd be happy to go back and talk to Tom Friedrich, the senior engineer, and see if he can pull out some bits and pieces that are either on the more expensive side or have a long lead time, and see if we could make those recommendations to Mr. Williams and Mr. Kraus.
Anything that might save us?
Sure. Yeah, I'll, I'll talk to Tom on the road on the way back.
I mean, in, in, in the climate you're in now, how do you know now's not the high price and this stuff ain't gonna come down? I mean, I, I think it'd be wise to, to, to go ahead and get stuff that takes a long lead time to save us on the time end, but on the price end, it, it's just a gamble.
Yes, sir. And that's the challenge. Like Mr. Kirby said, we're hoping it'll come back down soon. I mean, they've been saying that for six months, and it just keeps going up. So I'm, I'm happy to go back and talk to the senior engineers and see, because they, they talk to the vendors directly when they are putting these spec books together and putting the plans together. And so I'll see if there's anything that would make sense for us to order ahead to either save time or money, and I'll report back to Mr. Kraus so he can update the board.
One of those things always keep in mind, as far as pump purchases, electrical purchases, what have you, the contractor will gladly install it. But as soon as it's installed, it's your warranty. And, you know, when you have some issues like Kickladder did on startup, you know, we can, you know, they were in a situation where the contractor was responsible due to the contract of his responsibility. Of course, once you purchase it, it's sitting on your yard, you'll pay him to come back and fix it again.
Yes, sir.
And so that's something to always keep in mind. And just as a food of thought, we already got our notice that's still across the board, going up about three percent in January. So it ain't gonna get no cheaper.
Mr. Ford?
Jamie, would it be out of line to ask you to just kind of comment on forty-seven? Let us know where that's at and what the timeframe is on that?
Yeah, Mr. Chair.
I mean, because that affects us a lot also, you know, development also.
Certainly, yeah. Mr. Chair, I'm happy to comment on State Route forty-seven if y'all would like. We just had a meeting earlier this week to kick off the horizontal directional drills under I-75. And they're also looking at getting gas installed first in the Ring Court site, because there is a user next tran right there who's interested in, in hooking up to natural gas right away. And so as of right now, the, the project is actually about a month and a half ahead of schedule, because that contractor, when their bid was selected, they actually went ahead and ordered material before they had executed contract with the city, which was a risk on their part, but they did that knowing prices were going up and that materials are in short supply. And so by doing so, they actually received materials about six weeks ahead of schedule. And so we are on track to have that constructed within, I believe, we're looking at nine to ten months at this point to, to finalize everything. I can get a copy of the schedule that the contractor actually put together, and I can share that with Mr. Kraus, so he can share that with the board as well. But we literally are kicking off the directional drills under I-75 this week, which is the most complicated part of that project and requires the most coordination with DOT, and it's the most difficult to construct. So we're excited to get that part out of the way, and then they're gonna start putting in the gravity enforcement.
That'd be great.
Yes, sir. We're on track.
Jamie, I guess we'll be able to, you, it should be in a position to present that at the next joint city-county utility.
Yes, sir, absolutely. And I can also, similar to some of the presentation that was given here about the jail, I can bring photos of the progress that they've been making and information on kind of what's been expended so far. I can talk to the city and see if they're comfortable with me sharing that. I'm sure they would be.
Well, once they sit that day, but I guess we'll just make sure Jamie, well, she's always invited anyway. She's the center of attention.
Anybody have anything else from Miss Bell?
Mr. Chairman, would you like Ms. Bell to update you on the two segments of the Bell Road project?
Oh, yeah, yeah.
At this time, we are waiting on executed contracts from the city on the projects three through six that were the, the four that were within city limits. There was, I think, a question of just what pot of money that was coming from, from the design. So we have not kicked off that portion of the project yet. And then I know that the county has allocated one point five million towards the two northern portions of the Bell Road corridor, and I actually don't have an update on where that stands.
We have spoken with Mr. Williams, Mike Williams. A lot of Mr. Williams is around these days. We spoke with Mike Williams, and our, our proposal is that we fund the city on a reimbursement basis, and that they would actually execute that so that it fits well within the entire project.
Yes, sir. And we're, we're happy to help facilitate that and move everything forward simultaneously. And I think I'm just waiting at this point for direction from the city.
Thank you, Ms. Bell.
Thank you all so much. It's always a pleasure.
Mr. Kraus?
Thank you very much. Good evening. First item on the agenda is the Property Appraisers' Property Appraisers' Financial Report for 2021. Basically, they're returning one hundred and thirty-three thousand, four hundred and eighty-eight in unexpected funds to the board from last fiscal year. They're requesting that we return to them eight thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars for computer equipment that they had ordered but did not receive within the fiscal year. So we're asking you to approve Budget Amendment twenty-two dash eighteen, which would return eight thousand, one hundred and forty-nine dollars of these fees to the property appraiser.
So moved. Second. Have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
Similarly, the next item is Budget Amendment twenty-two nineteen for the sheriff's office. The sheriff's office has returned five hundred and nine thousand, five hundred and eighty-seven dollars from last year that was not expended. They are requesting that we return to them eighty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-one to cover computer equipment, phone equipment. He gave a list in his particular letter that I don't want to necessarily bore everybody with, but these equipment were ordered to upgrade it because of supply chain issues and everything else that were not received. So he's requesting the board approve Budget Amendment twenty-two nineteen to return eighty-two thousand, six hundred and fifty-one dollars to the sheriff's office.
So moved. Second. Have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
The next item is the revision to the resiliency requirement policy. Back, whenever this was done, the board was asked to approve in job descriptions a requirement for any supervisor to live within Columbia County, and it could only be waived by the Board of County Commissioners. This means foreman. This means any supervisor. And it makes it more difficult for Mr. Kirby or Mr. Pittman or other people to hire some of these supervisors who may be very good and live very close, but just not within Columbia County. So what we're asking is rather than have to bring every single one of those back to the board and request a waiver, or to rewrite all the job descriptions and bring all the job descriptions back to the board, if the board would establish a policy designating the county manager or anything below the department head level to have the ability to grant that waiver.
So moved, Chairman. I'll second that. Have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
The next item is Schinkel and Schultz Additional Services. As you know, the Department of Emergency Management granted the county a grant to redesign the EOC so that it meets all the state hurricane wind load requirements and all the current requirements. They felt that our current EOC, while a nice facility, would not hold up to a direct hit hurricane and does not meet current requirements. So we did that. And we're at the end of the contract, and we need some additional work from the company. There is a provision within the contract that allows for that additional work. Additional work would be nine thousand, six hundred and ninety-six dollars. And basically, that would give you what it would cost to build the facility that they designed.
I move to approve the additional services. Second.
Dave, what, what is the additional services? What, I mean, I understand.
It's the actual going in and doing a detailed cost, construction cost estimation of what the facility would cost.
Was it covered in the previous?
It was not.
Any more discussion? We have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
The next item is RFQ twenty-twenty-one K Professional Engineering Services for High-Dry Acres. As you know, we received a CDBG grant to reap, to pave and put in stormwater improvements in high-dry acres. We did go out for quotes, and we got four proposals back, North Florida Professional Services, Dewberry Engineering, Jones Edmonds and Associates, and DR PMP. So what we're doing at this point is just asking you to approve the ranking and authorize us to go out and negotiate the contract with the highest-ranked firm, which in this particular case would be North Florida Professional Services.
So moved. Second. Have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed?
At the same time we applied for that grant, we applied for a second grant to do the exact same thing, but for the Parnell Hills subdivision. Again, we received four proposals, Jones Edmonds and Associates, Dewberry Engineering, North Florida Professional Services, Inc., and DR MP, Inc. This time, the highest-ranked one was Joan Edmonds and Associates, Inc. And so we were requesting the board to, again, authorize us to approve the final ranking and then authorize us to begin contract negotiation.
So moved. Second. Have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
All opposed? Motion passes.
And then the final item I have tonight is a letter of engagement from Buchanan, Ingersoll, and Rooney. They were the ones that came to you and said, we can help you with your economic development grant writing. We can help you with your activity in the legislature, with your activity with the agencies, basically assist us in Tallahassee. We've been using them for, I think, about four or five months, maybe a little bit less. They were the ones that got us into the Assistant Secretary or Deputy Secretary of DEO on Tuesday, and have been talking up our grants with the governor's office. And so basically, that, that particular one, that trial period has expired, and they just want to know if we would like to continue for the next twelve months.
So moved. Second. Have a motion in the second.
I'd just like to say, I met some of the people at this firm down at the conference, and I'm gonna tell you, they're professionals. They're, they're, they're professionals. They do a great job. So.
And they have actually brought a project to economic development that they're looking at right now.
Mr. Chair.
Yes, sir.
And we are just spinning in the sand if we do not have lobbyists.
Gotta have lobbyists.
I agree completely.
You don't have lobbyists, you gonna have DEP, you gonna have everything else on you. Have a motion in the second. All in favor?
Aye.
Opposed?
That's everything I have. Thank you very much.
David, I mean, you're, mine and your discussion yesterday, out of curiosity, on the land purchase deal that, you know, we're bringing back for an appraisal, did you ever determine where that money would come from, would have come from reserve?
It would have come from some of the project money, year-end monies from last year that we did not appropriate. So we appropriated most of the year-end monies, but there were still about three to five million dollars that was not appropriated, and I would have recommended taking it from that. So last year's year-end money.
Is that all, all, all for Mr. Kraus? Y'all got any more questions?
We have two additions to the agenda. Access sixty-seven.
Thank you, Mr. Chairman, members of the board. As you may have heard at our last fact conference, the governor has appointed the Florida Office of Broadband Responsibilities through DEO. Florida Association of Counties is, is working hard with the counties to implement the strategies to, to bring broadband to underserved areas countywide in, in every part of Florida. We took the first step in this process at our last meeting. It was on the consent agenda by passing the resolution. Our next step in the process is to form a local technology planning team. And the only reason I bring it up tonight, I'm gonna give you all copies of this, because the second bullet point in, in this defines what that team should be made of, and it's, it's basically education, healthcare, business, tourism, agriculture, economic development, and local government. And I would also recommend, on the local government side, that somebody familiar with GIS in the county serve on that board, because one of the next steps is a, is a, an actual app that we will ask our citizens to test their broadband speed. It's actually linked to GIS, and it will give us an accurate picture of where broadband is lacking in the county, so we don't have to rely on getting it from the actual broadband companies themselves. So with that being said, I only bring it up tonight because I'm gonna put it on, ask the chairman to put it on the agenda next meeting to appoint this committee. My recommendation is, y'all take this and read all the, the different aspects these people need to come from, and to stay in the sunshine law, if you would just give your recommendations to David, and David will give them to me, and then we will regroup at the next meeting and actual form, actually form this committee.
We appreciate what you're doing, Mr. Williams. That's, that's a big deal. People are really interested in that. Anything else on that?
Good one.
That's it. Ron, you have additional agenda?
Well, we sort of did my street code in, at the first of the meeting.
Okay, so you're done with that?
Yeah.
All right. Do we have any public comments? Staff comments?
Mr. Chair, the gavel.
What about the gavel?
Oh, oh, well, I hadn't stopped yet.
One, one, one comment, Mr. Chair.
Oh, okay.
Mr. Chair.
Take me about this.
Mr. Chair.
Which we.
One comment.
Which we. Guys, I, every meeting and everything that happened in between the meeting, when we look at economic development in Columbia County, I'm gonna tell you guys again, I am so proud of the direction this board is going. Now, we, 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 we got, we got to spend money, but by spending money, we position ourselves to get companies and enjoy, and to provide fine employment for, for residents of Columbia County. And I, once again, I'm just, just like the way the board is stepping up to meet this challenge.
I agree with you, Commissioner Williams. You either plan for growth, or you, or it just happens, and it's usually chaos. I, I think we're doing a great job of planning for growth, and growth is gonna happen.
Yeah. You know?
Yes, it's coming.
Something to present to you, Rocky.
Yeah, and, and, you know, what I want to iterate is, during your, your time, especially the last few months, you've been doing great, and we're, we're heading in the right direction. We can fight the powers that be and get it done. Appreciate it. Thank you. Wish you all the luck.
Yeah. Thank you, sir.
I will have to say, it was some trying times during some of my meetings. It was pretty, pretty rough.
Any more commissioner comments? Sorry. How about public comment?
I can worry after that.
What?
I've already said staff comment.
Were there any staff comment?
No, sir.
No, sir. Okay. Motion to adjourn.
So moved.
Time to get you straight.
Yeah.